All right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We have a board of selectmen's meeting, January 2nd, 2019, first for the year. I call that to order. And I, we have an agenda. And I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Do you have a second?
Second.
And any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
We have one set of minutes to approve. Have you had a chance to look at those?
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, December 19th, 2018, as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sue? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We've got correspondence. That USDA letter is still there. Silver Petrocella and Downs are working on that. Over the holiday, they've done what they can. We've still got information to pull together. And then this false building committee is going to be drafting a letter to send back to them. But we are working on that. My first selectmen's report. Rob, you had suggested the DeCic tree service. She gave you some stuff last time on it. I called him up and talked to Jason at quite some length. Well worth a visit to their website to watch them take down that pine tree. I'm sure you've done that. But I've never seen anything quite like that, the way the two machines are handing the parts off, working them through. Jason was very imaginative. He indicated that he could piggyback us on the state or resource. When I inquired about working your wires, he said absolutely not. He would not do that, that that had to be a bucket. That once the trees were on the ground, once the material was on the ground and reduced below the wires, he could probably work with us and thought he could be constructive. Looking at the machinery, my guess was, I was looking at $3 million, $4 million worth of machinery there. Between the multer grinder, I guess it is, grinding hole trunks, the incredible truck to haul away the grindings, and the actual device to take the tree down. I can't imagine, I have heard, not from him but from others, upwards of $8,000 a day for that machinery to do that. He promised me numbers so that I could take a look at it. I've talked to Beth about it. With the holidays, I haven't seen the numbers yet. So, that's still pending, but very interesting. I had one complaint, I wanted to ask you about it, Rob. The hop yard road. And apparently what they did going up there is a section with no wires. And they ground everything, tree trunks, branches, the whole thing, and just blew it back into the woods. And my ride up through there, I looked and I thought I saw a foot, foot and a half of chips here and there. Had quite a bit of coverage with it. My knowledge, experience is that if you put down fresh chips, nothing grows there for the next two or three years. It sucks, I forget if it's the nitrogen or something, out of the soil.
Yeah. If it smothered any plant vegetation, that's there too, but yeah.
Yeah, and there was a great deal of concern on one party that called me about the impact on the forest where they had blown all those chips in. That it was going to take years and years before it looked right again. Now, it's a matter between the state and the state. I mean, it's not something that we have control over. But I'm not sure that I would advocate or support that kind of an approach to any of our roads.
It will really depend, I guess, on the situation, what, how many trees, everything. As you said, most of that property that was done actually boarded, though not all of it, is a double hop yard property or other private property. So, I really can't comment on it, except that there was a lot of stuff blown into the woods there, and I'm sure they confirmed that it'd be okay. I mean, they could move that bucket, the chute is easily moved, so they probably could do a better job of rotating it to reduce the depth and...
Spin it back. When you go up to Alaska where they were doing the dredge mining, and they had a conveyor system that went out behind themselves, and you could see just fan shapes where they were doing that
Yeah.
of the rubble, which apparently contains all the big chunks of gold. The only thing that would stay onboard was the small chunks. And you hear rumors about people go out finding a boulder of gold somewhere. Anyway, I found that very interesting and...
So, what if, I'd be curious, because they were using that equipment on Route 16 in Colchester, East Hampton, Colchester. And I'm just curious if anybody, I don't know if they were blowing it into trucks or chipping it. I mean, some places there must have been...
Well, the video he's got distinctive. Shows a 40-foot box truck, top open. And, I mean, one arm just handing it off to the other. Away it goes.
Yeah.
And wow.
Well, I was talking to the DOT crew, and they said they, in one day, they cleared over 100 trees. Now, some of them were small trees, but some were very, very big trees, big envelopes and things. But that, and however, however many, a mile or more of road they did there. That was a very extensive clearing, because they wanted to daylight much of the road too, so...
You've got a nice broad road there that, you know, if you're working on the far side, you might be, you get a little more license out of it.
Right.
But he was quite at, Jason was very adamant. He says, absolutely not anywhere near wires. You know, he said, we'll go in there with a bucket, or you can have your bucket do it. He said, but we aren't going to use the, what they call it, it's a something bogging, green monster. Anyway, Eric had a question. He's not here tonight, last time, about the Ackley Road. And I talked to Beth about that, and it is still far too wet. And as it rains every third day, and has for so long now, I suspect that's not going to change. And I think he had a question about the hold harmless. Rich Roberts had indicated that if we were going to let them in there, we really needed a hold harmless agreement. And I think Eric was questioning about who would generate that, and then we could do it through Rich, or Sumner Jr. could do it. It would work either way.
You're talking about Eric Dill?
Eric Dill, yes. I'm sorry, Eric Dill. And Bone Mill Road is still posing a problem. It was going to be wrapped up before the end of the month. And they're over there putting the guardrails in. And they tried to punch a hole, and they hit a boulder. And a massive boulder. I was down there this afternoon talking to the guys. One of them sitting there with a sledgehammer in his hand. And I said, you're going to take the boulder out? He just looked at me and laughed. And you could see it in the bottom of the hole. He said, we're going to get it out, but it's going to take a little time to do that. And until they can open up the guardrail, they're not going to be able to open the road up. It had been scheduled for grand opening this weekend. We've canceled that now. Chris Reed was putting that together. So, we'll reschedule that later.
You know, my only comment on that is from the previous meeting, who, the 28th, 29th, whatever it was of the month, they didn't do any work there at all.
I was down there checking it, and over the holidays, they weren't there. You're absolutely right. They, and apparently they were. I talked to Chris Reed, and he was down there in that period of time, talking to him. And not only that, but Trademark, some of the executives were down there as well. So, there was some presence, but certainly not changing or doing a lot of work.
Well, I know one of the equipment, the pieces there, what they had, the bucket over top, or the auger, whatever it was in the hole. And there was two skid steers there originally, and then there was one when I, like I said, it was last Thursday, but the...
I think they ran into a problem, and they were all kind of milling around, trying to figure out what to do about it. Hopefully, it's going to be within the next week or so. They seemed optimistic about it. They'd had the resolution. And Route 82 is open, both of them. And they're pulling out all their gear and equipment today. I got the impression that they resurfaced. And I didn't think they were going to be able to, but I got the sense that they had done some resurfacing. It's a lot smoother than it was.
Today, or in the last, last week or so maybe?
I mean, just within the last couple of days.
Oh, okay.
Because it'd been quite bumpy as you went over it. It was uncomfortable. And tonight, driving out, and it's in the dark, so you really can't tell, but just looking at it, it was different. And it was much smoother. So, either it's full of ice, or it's improved. Anyway, that's about what I have at that point. And moving on, citizens' concerns? Do we have any concerns out there? Yes, sir?
Rob, they did come and put the last level of timber and fasten it down. They were there somewhere over the holidays.
Okay.
But the guardrails are the last thing to be completed on Bone Mill. In talking to Trademark, they're waiting for word from the engineering firm as to what to do with the boulder, whether to attach to it or remove it. You talked to them today, which is more recently than I am, and so you have...
No, no feedback.
As to Route 82, if that's smooth, I just came over it. I hope they're going to be back.
You're over the lower portion. All I did was the upper portion tonight.
I hope they're going to be back. If that's been as great, I'd be very disappointed. Last question. Since you've got me cornered down in my section of town, it's difficult to get out, Emlock Valley Road. Is it possible to determine what we're going to have to do?
Until we have an engineer...
When are we going to have an engineer in?
We are putting out an RFQ for that. I couldn't tell you exactly where we are with that. We're putting that together right now.
Is it closed?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, Sue?
I was asking, is it closed still?
Yes.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
You've got the corner there with the brook below you, 20 feet below you.
Yeah, I understand. No, I understand, but that's been a while, right?
That has been a while.
So, it's been closed since October?
Right after the...
It's been, right, within a matter of a week or so, took a look at it, said we can't. There's no, no idea what's under that road.
Right, so, so we hire an engineer, what's our process?
We have to go out for bids. We have to put together a bid package. It's over $15,000, no question about that, for the engineering that's going to be involved. So, we're in that process.
Should we plan on another four-year project?
I hope not.
I certainly do too. But I'd love to, an answer to that. I realize you can't give it to us tonight, but it has been since September, and nothing's been done.
And as I say, we're putting together the RFQ for it. And that's coming out of Public Works. And then we have to put it together, go out for bids, and get somebody in there. And I don't know whether it's on bedrock.
I understand.
It's on soil. I don't know if the first oil truck going over it is going to wind up in the brook.
I understand the problem. I just have seen no action.
So, when do we expect the RFQ to be done?
Thank you, Sue.
I, I can't tell you that right now. I know that it's in process, and we're working on it as fast as we can.
Emmett, you know, I had some dealings with narrow roads and steep banks and brooks near them. And typically, if there's any slippage, the first thing that indicates it is the tree's tip. There's no evidence of the trees tipping near it. It looks more like that someone pushed or plowed from the driveway and maybe pushed that fence back. And maybe there was a little tiny slippage at the top. But I think as an interim, we could have put more posts and redone that 60 feet, 70 feet of fence and temporarily resolve the thing, because it's really isolated. Now that Bone Mill's soon to be open, it's not as isolated as it was. But, you know, as an interim, it seemed that it would have been, make sense to spend about $500 there.
No, that's a call that I can't make. Beth could conceivably make it, and she'd want to make that call. And that's kind of putting it off in her, I don't want to do that, because I'm the one who closed it.
For the minutes, could I ask that we have a date by when something will be at least initiated?
I, yes. I mean, I can't, I can't tell you the date.
I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but we've been sitting here for a few months now with nothing happening. And if we don't ask the question, we'll be here six months from now. So, if we can just ask the Public Works Department when they expect to have an RFQ ready to go, and when that will be coming back, then at least we'll have some understanding. I've had questions from lots of people on the road, and I don't know more than you do. So, and it would just be nice to get some feedback from the department. Thank you.
Any other? Okay. Unfinished business. Revitalization committee, Town and Village Revitalization Committee. And... What we're doing right now, we're putting together once again an RFQ. We did not get the brownfield we had hoped for. Unfortunately, that went to someone else. And so, we're back on our own. We're looking for more. The EPA has just put out a brownfield. They're looking for applications by the end of the month. I've had Jimmy looking into that. He's got some questions about whether or not we'd be eligible for it. I want to talk to him about that tomorrow.
Emmett, do we, so, last time we met, I thought the RFQ was together, but we were waiting to find out if we got this grant.
We have it, and it's in...
And we did not get the grant, so is the RFQ ready to go? I don't want to keep putting it off to wait for maybe another grant.
And that is in the revitalization committee's hands.
Okay. So, if it's together, when do they meet again?
I'm not sure what the next meeting is. Any idea?
Last Wednesday. Last Wednesday of the month before...
So, it's another month still till we get anything out the door?
Well, I'll give Bill the call and find out where we stand.
They, right, I mean, I thought they had it together, we're just waiting for this.
They were also talking about doing some more edits and...
Yeah, they've been working on it, but it ought to be finished up by now. They ought to get it together. Okay. Transfer station ready. First of the articles that I've put together should be in the paper. Dave picked it up on Monday. I'm not sure it's going to make it for this week. Not this week, it'll be in next week's. Second article is pretty close to being finished. Beth and I are going to be going up to Willie Waste and sitting down with Tim DeVivo and talking to him at great length about recyclables, what's going on with them right now with China. Hearing some optimistic things, that there are operations in America that are starting to get geared up to start handling the recyclables, which is probably a more appropriate way to do them than what has been happening for the last few years. So, hopefully, we're going to see some change occurring there. But not to be too optimistic about it. I talked to Tim at some length, and he asked what we were doing right now, and I told him. I said, we're getting $5 a ton for recyclables. We're paying $70 a ton for the refuse that's going into the hopper. He says, oh gee, that's not the way it is anymore. Says, right now, and he didn't tell me what the refuse was costing, obviously more than 70. He says, they're currently charging $40 a ton for recyclables. So, there's a discount involved there, but that's a $45 difference per ton. So, that can become a very substantial item. So, we have to sit down and talk with them. Our contract expires next summer with them. So, we'll be renegotiating a new contract.
So, that increase goes in effect immediately, or...
No, that's not us. We have a contract...
Okay, that's right, that was my question.
That's what I just said. We have a contract we're going to be negotiating for the middle of next summer. But others right now are paying $40 a ton to get rid of recyclables. From what I hear across the river with Mira, which is going up to Hartford, if anything gets worse. So, it's a whole new landscape out there. Everything is changing. And we're going to have to really pay attention to what we're doing. Citation hearing, there's really no change with that. And the animal ordinance and the trailer ordinance. We have public hearing on the 9th. It's been put out, the ordinances, on the website in three different locations. So that anyone that wishes to review that will be able to do so. Moving on to new business. First item is a bid award for Foxtown Road Bridge replacement. We're ready with that. However, the state has not sent us their concurrence, so we really can't do anything tonight on it. Had we waited, had we not had the holiday and waited until yesterday to post the agenda, it probably would not be on the agenda right now. But we had to do what we thought was going to happen. So, we're going to postpone that until the next meeting. That said, moving on. We have a commission, a board commission change. And I'm going to make a motion to change the status of Irene Haines. I'm an alternate member to a regular member, filling a vacant position with a term expiration of June 30th, 2021, the Economic Development Commission. And you have in your items, Item C, it's an appointment to regular commission. Mr. Kazner recommended changing Irene Haines' status to a regular member of the board. Motion made by Mr. Finama, seconded by Mr. Alvegarkey to recommend the board's selectmen that Irene Haines be appointed as a regular member of the Economic Development Commission. Nana Masai. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay. And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have some tax refunds, or a tax refund. I'm going to make a motion to award a tax refund in the amount as presented, $204.20. William Clausen. Can I get a second on that? And a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nana Masai. And we are back to public comments again. Randy?
A couple of things on the revitalization committee. First off, the media has sent over the RFQ to the board's selectmen.
It has been sent over?
I was copied from Bill Garrish, chairman.
Okay. Have we received that?
The same one you got the last time, but it's not complete, because the Brownfield grant section still needs to get fixed.
And the understanding was that it would be taken care of in the board's selectmen's office. The other question I had... Communication was not good with revitalization. We did our work.
Okay.
The question I, does, does the chairman know that the Brownfield grant was not awarded?
Believe he does.
That I do not know.
I, you know...
Because first I heard it, I spoke with Jim Buntres today, as far as you know.
Yeah, I, I'm under the impression he knows. If he doesn't, I'll make him aware of it.
Do you know when, when that information came from?
The Brownfield grant? So, it would have been sometime just before Christmas that we got it. And, you know, the confusion, it may be that he wasn't made aware of it.
The other thing, in regards to Jim, must have mentioned to me that he ate, or possibility. His impression was, and I'll be sure this will be, if, that I wouldn't be eligible. Because if another entity was in there other than the state, which the town of Port was, according to the language in the...
I read the same thing, and I need to talk to him about that, because I read it a little different from the way he reads it. So, I'm going to question whether or not we should go ahead with it. But I, he was gone today, I had no chance to catch him. I looked at it, and I went, eh, I'm not so sure. The point is that the town, if we didn't contribute whatever's there, that we were eligible for it. And I don't think that we contributed anything while we were there. What they're talking about is arsenic and some hydrocarbons that we don't use at all. Very small amounts of hydrocarbons, but more arsenic than anything. And that's something that we would not have contributed to. So, I've got some questions about whether or not we might be eligible. I just, I just, you know, maybe, maybe we're not, but I'd like to know that a little better.
Emmett, if I might, I mean, typically on those things, though, unless you did testing right after they took it over...
And that may be the catch 22.
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
I just want to resolve that in my own mind, just why, why we are not eligible.
So, we as a board of selectmen, though, have not voted on the RFQ? Do we have to vote on the RFQ? And is it in our hands?
No, no, no.
We don't have to vote, it's already come to us, we've seen it, it's going out.
It's not our decision. Linda?
On the 19th, when you had your last meeting, you were in executive session. Had a discussion with Bill Garrish when we were sitting in the cafeteria waiting to come forth. At that point, I did tell Bill Garrish that it did not look like we were going to be getting the Brownfield grant. We hadn't gotten official notification, but I had gotten a, I saw the governor's notice that said, we didn't get it? Or that of the other awards, and what we weren't sure of is whether it was just round one, and there was going to be a round two, so, so on. That did not happen, we did not get it. I also went talking with Bill Garrish. He had asked me, once his RFQ goes out, he goes, well, how do we end up actually awarding the person? You know, awarding the, the company that gets it? You don't award off an RFQ, because you don't really know what the project's going to be. All you're asking for is somebody that's qualified. He goes, then do we have to go out for an RFP after that with the narrowed-down version of people? And I said, well, you could have done an RFQ/RFP that takes care of that in one, in one function. And he was going to question Jim on whether we should add that piece at the time. I don't know whether with the holidays and stuff, I don't know if that happened. Right, he was leaving for Wisconsin the next day.
We had all the discussion about RFPs. The language is in there, other than the boilerplate that Cindy said has to go in there, that the certain have to do, the Cheetah has to do. Other than that, there was no more information on RFPs that put in there. And the whole issue had to do with how many people were going to come forward, and it comes to developers. We put too much information, too much on them. They've got huge costs, we won't see any.
Well, exactly, but he wasn't sure...
Needs to stay there like it is.
Without question, but he wasn't, he wasn't sure of how it went. Okay, so you go, you send the RFQ out, you get, hopefully, 10 people interested. You narrow those 10 people down to how many? Three, four? And then, what process do you use to then select the right person from those four? That's your request for proposal. So, now you're doing a separate request for proposal for the narrowed-down four people? When you do an RFQ/RFP on one route, it's almost like doing both in one, but you ask for the qualifications first, so everybody doesn't have to spend all that money doing the proposal. Then you get all these people that are qualified, you narrow out the people and say, okay, only these five are really qualified to do the job. Then, those five are selected for shortlist interview. And then, whether it takes two months, three months, four months to do the RFP portion of only those four or five that you've selected, then you're able to make your award with the project. Either way, you can either do it one or the other. But he wasn't sure how you were going to pick from the RFQ, what do you pick the person?
Unfortunately, Bill was not at the meeting when we cleaned up all the end, the RFQ. We had those discussions. And that's where we learned that we can't buy anything with a whole lot of information, a lot of requested information from the developers in the form of an RFP.
Correct.
And so, discussion centered on, we're going to get that when we interview them. When we narrow down, if we're lucky enough to get 10 or even five, we narrow it down to the two or three, that will be forwarded to the selectmen or their review. And then, that's, that's where we're going to pull that. And then that's, that's where we're going to pull that.
And then those two or three will have to do-
Part of the information coming out of the RFQ will be, what are these guys planning to do? What is their vision? And that's the critical part.
He was just questioning me.
I just want to get the RFQ out the door. Who's, who's going to send it out the door? Is it, from what I'm understanding, it's done, because now we have the answer to the brownfield piece, so we already know. So who's sending the RFQ out the door? Where is it?
That's going to be me.
Okay, that's what I want to know. And is it ready to go?
When Jim gives me the revised part to the, I was under the impression Jim was revising that part. I wasn't involved in writing it.
I know, revising the brown-
I'm just managing sending it out.
The brownfield piece, because I-
Right. And then Bill Garrish was also supposed to contact Connecticut Main Street and ask them, what was their mechanism? Because since we joined them, we should also have a list of all their developers. So I was asking him, how do they go about distributing these to their developers? Do they give us the list and we put it on? Do they have a mechanism, like a listserv that sends it out? How does that work? And he was going to check with them and find out. And I haven't talked to him since then.
I mean, that was one of the strong points with Main Street, was they'll bring more into the mix.
Which is fine. I just, I, I just want to know how it's getting out the door and when it's going out the door, because it just seems to be being revisited every time we're not getting it out the door. So I just wanted to go out the door. Multiple ways. Main Street, I think would be great.
But I need to know how that happens. I can't just say, "Okay, Main Street, take care of it."
So.
I gotta do it. Right.
So-
I can just add something. My understanding, the only thing that the committee is looking for from Main Street is to invite, to get a list from Main Street of potential developers, because they're supposed to have all these resources.
Correct.
And have a familiarization day. Invite them in and do a show and tell. Talk to Bob, Mark was part of the discussion. EDC would make a presentation. And hopefully from that, would generate enough interest, they would submit RFQs.
And that's the information I-
That's all we were looking for from-
And you give me the list and I send it out there, that's fine. You either, anyway, they want to do it, I'll work around it. But I need the information.
Other than Main Street, how are we, where do we, where are we sending it to? Where does it go?
I put it in the Hartford Current. I would put it in the East Adam News because one of the developers is local. I put it, when it goes to the Hartford Current, it also goes out to all the trades, pick it up on the, you know, the website, all that. Goes on our website, it goes on the DAS website, on the state.
Okay.
And that kind of hits everything.
So you're going to follow up with Jim Ventress to see if it's done? The brownfield part has come out and then we can send it out?
Brownfield is out and we did not get the award.
Right, I understand that.
Okay. And yes?
I just wanted to move.
Thank you.
Okay, you all set?
I guess.
Okay, I thought you had another.
No, no.
Okay, make sure that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Your public comment?
Yes.
Bob Kazner. I'd just like to bring up the building officials' office and also the new fee schedule that this board just passed. I think that we're basically on the extreme high end of what the fee structure is. I work in other towns. I work in Lyme, I work in Old Lyme. And basically, it's an entirely different story than what we have for fee structure right now in the building department. And I think you pushed it way over the top with being reasonable. And just to give you an illustration, I'm building a building down on Town Street. It was replacement buildings or outbuildings. It's a second structure. The fees are over $4,000 for the building permit alone. That's before you get zoning and everything else. That's way, way more than what any other town is asking for anything like this. And I think, I don't know, I didn't have any input into this. I don't know if there were public hearings. Was there a public hearing on the fee, changing the fee structure?
No.
No.
There wouldn't be.
Wouldn't we want to have input from the community that before we changed fee structures? I mean, these are the-
No, we got an average around the state and around our area. I think that we did some, they did some homework on it and-
And who did this homework?
I think the-
Building.
Building inspector.
Okay, but basically, I guess I would like to see what that is, because it's certainly not what I say out there. I mean, it may be what's going on in the Guilford or Clinton or Madison areas, but it's not what's going on in Lyme and Old Lyme and East Lyme and Waterford. Those are the towns I'm familiar with. But I think that this needs to be reviewed, because, you know, we're just starting to get a little bit of activity in the building department. And this is like, no, we don't want you from day one. And when you come in with fee structures that are, I mean, $4,000 per, this is a secondary structure? It's just way, way over the top. This is a structure that's all hung slack. There's no foundation, there's no cellars, there is no, you know, bathrooms, kitchens, or any of the expensive items. And a building permit used to be for a house would be probably in the $2,500 to $3,000 bracket. And that was the norm. But that's a whole home with, with everything. And I think that what we're doing now, now that is going to be almost $4,000 per house. And that's just building. And we have to take and pull out the, the more permits for electrical, plumbing, and everything else. So it seems like, why do we need to be at that kind of a figure for the services that are being offered? And I think that if we have 10 inspections that are done by the building department, I don't know, I mean, basically they take five to 10 minutes to go through it. I mean, and so, you know, we usually figure it's like 50 bucks to have him come in and do his inspection. And then you got to review plans, probably two hours to three hours to review plans. But that's less than $1,000. And we're, we're up to $4,000 for a structure. So I think it needs to be reviewed. I think it needs to basically, let's see what towns we're comparing ourselves with. I mean, prices of real estate in East Adam are going nowhere. They're flat. And they've been flat. And so where does this extra money come from?
I'm sure our building inspector has this data, he can review it. But we, we're given all the data.
Correct.
That's what we came up with. So I'm sure they have it at the-
What data do you have? Do you have a copy of what was given to you?
It was a long time ago. It was back at the budgets, in budget season last year.
Well, it didn't get enacted until-
Wasn't it? Or was it in the summer? I don't know.
No, it didn't get enacted until basically like 60 days, 90 days ago.
First, activate.
Oh, October 1st.
And he based his amounts on, and I don't know the terminology, RLS means? Is that the right terminology? On how much it costs to do each thing?
Yeah.
That's, that's the figures you have.
He had averages for us and stuff.
Did you, I don't know, did you-
But I think it's something you can go to see the building inspector and ask for what he gave us. And I'm sure he'll be happy to share that.
Well, we don't have enough business hours for the building official. Basically, when we want inspections right now, they're at 6:00 in the morning or 6:00 at night. That's when we get inspections. And this is extremely unheard of. And now we're paying top dollar for the, for the, for it, and we don't have access to the building official. And I mean, you've got a very qualified guy there. He's knowledgeable, he knows his stuff, but we don't have access to it. And I think we need to have somebody here during the business hours of the day. The inspections need to be done during the business hours of the day. And because this doesn't work. I mean, we want to have our subcontractors, basically, when we have an inspection for wiring, we want to have the electrical contractor there, so that he's on site when the building official comes. And right now, we don't have the opportunity to do that. And I think that we need to do something in this building department to get this straightened away. And I think, one, we need to take and have somebody here during normal business hours. And two, we need to review that fee structure and based on what it costs the town. Is it, unless this is supposed to be a profit-making department, I don't know. Is that the intent? But certainly the cost of what it costs to provide the services are nowhere near what we're paying for, for fee structures. And I think it needs to be reviewed from the standpoint of what is our cost to provide these services? And I think that, yeah, I totally agree, that we should be covering your costs. But I don't think it should be a profit-making intent. I'll just rest my case. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
But I would like to see if the, how these numbers came about and how I can get access.
Bob, you seem to have access to the numbers. Could you get me copies of other towns that we can do a comparison with?
Yeah.
I mean, that makes it real simple. And I wouldn't know where to begin to collect those myself, wouldn't have time to. But you're out and about and you know where they are. Bring them in, I'd like to look at them.
Yeah, okay. If the building inspector collected those to come up with this schedule, shouldn't that information already be in town hall?
Why don't you just give him what he already did? He came up with-
I'd like to be able to do a comparison to other towns. You're saying that Lyme is a lot cheaper? I'd like to see where it ran out.
The numbers were come up with, if your building inspector collected those. Is that what I heard earlier?
Yeah, I think he did comparisons.
I think he did comparisons. I don't know what he used or how legitimate it is. I think you can give me legitimate stuff that I can look at.
But I think we, I should have a copy of what we use to basically do.
We don't have that ourselves here, that I'm aware of.
He has it.
He's got it, let's see.
The inspector has it. So.
Let's see what he's got.
Presented it to us, so.
Who's presented it to us should be part of the packet.
It'd be part of the minutes, so.
Is it in your office?
I'm sorry?
Would it be in your office?
Isn't it part of the minutes?
I have a copy, but not-
Right, not now. We don't have it now, but-
Oh, no, I don't, I don't mean right now.
Just send it to him. When you have a chance, send it to-
Carry everything with me. But I do have what he gave us.
Okay, that would be great. And I'll, I'll stick and see if we can get a copy of that. And then I'll get you some copies and maybe we can do some comparisons. But I, I do think when we change fee structures, I think we should have some kind of a public hearing, so that people have the opportunity to do that, to see what, what we're doing and why we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any others? Rob?
The only thing I have is after attending the Sustainable CT seminar that the CCM, United Council of Municipalities, yeah, the, I'll be bringing a resolution, giving you some information for a resolution, for us to join and become a sustainable CT town. And it's just basically paperwork, so we can get and actively pursue that.
Okay.
That's information you gave me.
That's one where you take a, you add a certain percentage to the sale of a property?
No, 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 no. This has to do with, I'll give you, remember the packet you gave me way back when this has-
Oh, whoa, that's a-
Sustainable CT.
There's another sustainable out there.
Well, that's the other green bill, so called, but this is the-
I'm thinking the wrong one.
Right, right. So, but I'll give you more information and then so we hear.
We should have about half of that stuff done already.
Well, it, it's, there's, it's much more, it's quite a very, it's a broad concept and a lot of, lot of moving parts to it. So, and it's going to involve a lot of community involvement and a committee together will need be put together to make it happen, so.
Right.
But I'll have the information for you in more details.
Okay. Sounds good.
Ask you a question.
Okay. That said, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:44. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.